Thank you all for joining us. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone about our meeting format. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting is being held in person and online. Commissioners, Planning Department staff, and members of the public are attending-
...in the Wheat Ridge City Hall or by way of the Zoom platform. Members of the public who are not present and wish to make comments may participate virtually by joining through Zoom either on a device or by calling in. A Zoom meeting link and a dial-in information can be found on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. In addition to being online via Zoom, we are also broadcasting this meeting on Channel 8 and WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. When it is time for public comment, and there are several comment periods tonight, those who wish to comment on our Zoom connection, use your Raise Your Hand button. If you are dialing in, press *9 to raise your hand and *6 to unmute your phone. If you plan to speak online tonight, please keep background noise to a minimum. If you do not plan to speak, we recommend you simply view the meeting live by watching on Channel 8 or on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. We appreciate your participation in tonight's meeting. We hope to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. I would now like to call to order the City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for March 21st, 2024. May I please get a roll call of members?
Jonathan Shelkey. Krista Holub. Christine Disney.
Here.
Daniel Gravy is absent tonight. Patrick Quinn.
Here.
Will Kearns.
Here.
Michael Moore.
Here.
Sierra Man Quinones.
Here.
The next order on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, under God, indivisible and limited to the justice for all.
The next item is approving the order of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the order of the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda will stand as published. Next, we will vote to approve the minutes for the last meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 15th, 2024?
Madam Chair, I approve to, I move to approve the minutes from last meeting.
May I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote. And the motion passes. Four, five to two. Two abstaining.
Yes.
We will now open the general interest public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. If you plan to speak on an item that is on tonight's agenda, please wait until we get to those items. All speakers are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Speakers may not donate their time. Is there anyone signed up to speak? Tammy, is there anyone on Zoom?
There is nobody on Zoom.
All right. All right, then, seeing that there's no one on Zoom or in the chambers, I will close the public forum. Tonight, we have two public hearings. We will take public comment on both items. And since we don't have anybody, I believe, from the public here to speak, we'll go ahead and Commissioner Quinn, would you please read the request?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce case number WZ 23-04 Lutheran Master Sign Plan. Case WZ 2304 is an application by HDR Architects Incorporated requesting approval of a master sign plan for Intermountain Health Lutheran Medical Center Hospital Campus at Clear Creek Crossing. The master sign plan proposes a deviation from typical standards to allow for internal directional signs and larger wall signs, both of which are inherent to a hospital setting. If approved, the design pattern book will be amended administratively to refer to this master sign plan for Planning Area 1.
Thank you. May we please have the staff report?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Stevens, and I'm a senior planner with the Community Development Department with the City of Wheat Ridge. I'm presenting tonight case number WZ 2304, which is a request for approval of a master sign plan for the hospital campus at Clear Creek Crossing located at 13155 West 40th Avenue. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The properties within the City of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. This is an aerial of the property on the screen. The site is located within Clear Creek Crossing Master Plan Development and situated northeast of the intersection of West 40th Avenue and Clear Creek Drive. The total lot measures approximately 26.93 acres in size. And here's the current zoning. Clear Creek Crossing was zoned planned mixed-use development in 2018 with a regulating outline development plan, design pattern book, and vision book. These regulatory documents established the allowed uses and development standards for the property, including sign standards. And here is the planning area map from the design pattern book. The site is considered a part of Planning Area 1 of the planned mixed-use development, and Planning Area 1 is also called the Mill District, denoting this area as an employment-based sub-district in Clear Creek Crossing. The overall vision for the site along I-70 in the development is to create a medical campus to serve Wheat Ridge residents in the West Metro community. Specific development plans were approved for the hospital in 2021 and the medical office building in 2023. Neither specific development plan included proposed signage because it was understood that a master sign plan would follow. Just to remind, the purpose of a master sign plan is to encourage well-planned, well-designed, unified signage for larger properties while still allowing for identification of individual businesses and buildings. Sign plan can vary from sign code, or in this case, from the design pattern book. And they are essentially like a planned development for signage, and they're approved by Planning Commission and recorded with the county. Not all properties are eligible for a master sign plan. They must be at least two acres in size, under unified control, and must be comprised of a commercial mixed-use or industrial development. In this case, the property is at least two acres in size and under one ownership. Sign plans do not change the zoning or permitted uses and do not review site or building design. All other signage proposed on the property will comply with the design pattern book, and they're not represented on this plan. The purpose of the master sign plan is specifically to document and approve deviations from underlying sign requirements. A full analysis of the master sign plan is included in the staff report, but signage is expected to comply with standards that would otherwise apply except as modified by the master sign plan. The master sign plan proposes a deviation from typical standards to allow for internal directional signs and larger wall signs, both of which are inherent to a hospital setting. Now I'll go through the applicant's request. The design pattern book regulates freestanding signs, or monument signs, but those standards are intended for retail contexts, to advertise tenants and the Clear Creek Crossing project as a whole. The master sign plan proposes a new category of freestanding signs that better align with the needs of a hospital campus. In the context of this hospital, directional signs are critical and necessitate a larger size. The master sign plan proposes two types of directional signs, monument style and posts and panel, which are described in the table on the screen, and the deviations from the design pattern book are shown here as well. Freestanding sign details with elevations of the directional monument signs I'll show in just a moment, and the new signs are proposed to match each other with concrete bases. So, more easily shown in the staff report, but on the screen you can see the locations and elevations of the freestanding signs proposed, so these are the ground monument signs. The design pattern book standards for freestanding signs are limiting for hospital sites, which has multiple buildings with multiple uses, designated parking areas for specific uses, and a designated circulation network for ambulances and emergency vehicles that needs to be clearly signed. The needs of a hospital campus are simply different than a retail center, and the proposed freestanding signs are intended for directional purposes. Setbacks have been incorporated to reduce vehicular and pedestrian conflicts, and freestanding signs will be required to be located outside of site distance requirements. The height and size of the signs is reasonable given the size and scale of the development, and the freestanding signs will unify the campus, which has multiple buildings, and the signs will provide directional guidance that is needed for efficient and safe circulation. This is a interpretation of the wall signage that's proposed here. Wall signs are allowed on building facades that face primary entries or exits, public right-of-way, parking areas, and private streets and drives. Size is limited to one square feet per linear foot of the facade to which the sign is affixed or a one-to-one ratio, equating to the maximum sizes per eligible elevation listed on the screen with no limit on the number of signs so long as size requirements are met. Signs are allowed to project up to 15 inches beyond the wall, and canopy signs are considered wall signs. This master sign plan specifically proposes an increased allowance of wall signs in four locations: on the hospital's south elevation, which is containing the primary entrance and visible from I-70 and West 40th Avenue; the parking garage east elevation facing I-70; and the medical office building north and south elevations, which can be seen from Highway 58 and West 40th Avenue. To balance the request for larger signs on the most visible facades, the applicant is proposing to prohibit any signs on other parking garage and medical office building facades that are eligible for signage pursuant to the design pattern book. The proposed wall signs are shown on the master sign plan sheets four and six. Deviations from the design pattern book are indicated on the table above. And here are the locations and the sample copy of the wall signs proposed. Note, the actual copy can vary so long as standards set forth in this master sign plan are met pertaining to number, size, height, and setbacks in the table that's on sheet two. Staff finds that while the size allowance is larger than what the code or design pattern book allows, the other restrictions put into place, such as prohibiting signage on other facades that would otherwise be eligible, and limiting the number of signs allowed, result in a more visible and cohesive development with minimal overall impact. The hospital use is unique, and then it requires a high level of visibility, and the hospital campus is surrounded on three sides by major roadways that have a broad range of site visibility. The scale and mass of the buildings is larger than the average, which warrants larger signs, and all signs that are proposed to be larger are within the 50% increase, so they're found to meet the intent and purpose of Section 26708D relating to unification and integration of signage. Overall, staff finds that the master sign plan is cohesive and modestly sized compared to the overall scale of the development, and the additional signs will focus, or will help customers access and navigate the site. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, as well as completed an internal review. There were no concerns during the referral process. And before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to owners and tenants within a 600-foot radius. This presentation was also available to view on Wheat Ridge Speaks. We did not receive public comments in person, by phone, by email, or on Wheat Ridge Speaks. And with that, it was determined that the site is eligible, and the plan promotes well-planned and well-designed cohesive signage. It's appropriate for a hospital campus, which has unique needs, and it's consistent with the code. For all of those reasons, staff recommends approval of the request, and a recommended condition of approval is provided in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'll now entertain questions from the commissioners. Please remember to refrain from judgment either for or against the request, and please hold your comments of support or concern until after comment. And I'll start with Commissioner Shelkey.
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No questions at this time.
Commissioner Moore?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Holub?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Quinones?
Quinones. No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
So, the, I'm seeing that there's a 23-foot-wide sign on the south elevation, but I would think that a larger sign should be facing east towards I-70. That seems like more, makes more sense to me, but overall, it looks great. I just would think that you would want people to see the logo a little bit larger from I-70. That's it.
All right, thank you. Do we, do you have a presentation from the, okay, great. Please give us your name, spell it, and your address, please.
Yeah, this, Andy Schwa, S-C-H-W-A-B-E. Did you ask for the address?
Your address, please.
2365 Willow Lane. Or do you want the address of the site?
Your address.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I was just, I'm with HDR, the architect. I'm the project manager on the project, and we are, thank you. I'm representing Intermountain Health on this presentation. Let's see, how do I get this? Okay. So, what I wanted to just convey with our design is that this is a healthcare campus, and part of the reason that the signage deviation is being requested is that a lot of times when folks come onto a site, they view a camp, a health, a hospital as being very large, complex, and confusing, and to try to be able to navigate these sites, they, you know, they're coming on, they can be very, they can be overwhelmed, confused, they can become apprehensive as they're coming onto the site, and maybe even be frustrated if they're not able to navigate around the site properly. They are coming with cognitive, physical, and, you know, sometimes vision capability challenges, and what the signage is meant to do is really reassure them and provide a means for successfully navigating the site. So, what we, when we went about, you had located it earlier, so when we placed this onto the Mill Commercial District part of the Clear Creek Crossing Campus, we went about designing this, and we really wanted to set up a design that was a positive experience for all the entities that are going to be coming onto the campus. And it was important to be able to really set up user meetings, have interviews with all the different folks that make up the hospital campus, and be able to make it so that they, as they come onto the site, that they're having a very, that our design is set up, that it helps to shape and control how they're navigating the site, not just from the architecture, but setting up the wayfinding in a successful way. So, the, as we ultimately are designing it, we come out of those meetings putting ourselves in their shoes and creating a design that's going to be hopefully successful in creating that design environment that meets everybody's needs that's coming onto the site. And it's not just the architecture. Again, it's setting up the branding, the wayfinding, and the signage that's going to be, that's going to be successful for this healthcare. It's going to be successful for both the hospital function, as well as this unique environment for the healthcare setting. So, as we start to design the circulation and the plan for the different parking areas, and we're looking at bringing different, you know, we're looking to bring folks off of both 40th Avenue to the south and the Clear Creek Drive to the west, also understanding you're bringing them off the highways around. We want to be able to start by, where does that experience begin for the folks that are arriving on the campus, and understanding that, and being able to understand that each of the main decision points, that it's very clear and concise, and the directional signage is relative to where they're ultimately trying to go, and to provide not only signage to get them there, but to do it in an efficient manner that is really, you know, meaningful, you know, getting them there fast, because everybody, different folks have to get there faster than others. We're also looking at the fact that we're bringing multiple groups onto the campus. We're bringing patients, visitors, staff, we're bringing in deliveries, rapid transit, we're bringing, or not rapid transit, just transit is coming onto the site, and then service vehicles. So, that is, all that has to mix together, and we've done so by separating some of that flow. And then, on top of that, you've got some high-intensity deliveries or activities like the unread coming off the east side as the ambulance coming into the ambulance canopy, and separating that from just a general person coming for, a patient coming for a checkup from the south or the east. So, that's how we've set up everything. The, what we really want to do with the signage itself is to be able to create a hierarchy of those different, that exterior branding, and that hierarchy is going to be legible, reassuring, and meaningful for somebody who's approaching the campus. They're going to see that brand, they're going to see it from the wall signs to, they're going to see it in the directional ground signs to the canopy signs. So, they're approaching the campus, they see it up on the side of the building, they're finding that they're seeing that familiarity, that reassurance with that brand, they're progressing through the site with the directional signage, and then they're getting that sense of, I have arrived at the canopy of my destination. And so, what we have felt like we've done through this whole process is really taken some care to try to design all this signage into our, to our overall campus and our plan, and so we are asking for these deviations to the freestanding signs as well as the wall signs, and we thank you for your consideration and hopefully approval. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have nobody in chambers. I can open the hearing for public comment. We have no one in chambers. Tammy, do we have anybody online that wishes to speak?
Nobody on Zoom.
Okay, great. Before I entertain a motion, I'll go one more time through the commissioners to see if anybody has a comment about this before we take a vote. So, we'll start at the other end. Commissioner Kearns, do you have any comments?
Thoughts about the idea of facing a large sign east towards the highway, or does it make more sense from the circulate, from the local street system?
You know, ultimately, it was, you know, the owner's decision. I think they really wanted to make sure that they concentrated their increased square footage towards the main entry. That was their most important. I think they felt like they had both the signage on the parking garage as well as the main facade.
Yeah.
You know, I think I might have, you know, it was just kind of their choice, I guess.
I noticed the east elevation of the parking garage has a large sign, so it's double-signed from the highway.
And I think they felt maybe that it was close enough to those lanes of traffic that it was visible, plus you are, you are, you know, but I don't know. We didn't, we didn't, I didn't get their exact report out as to why they did that, so.
Looks great. Thank you very much.
And Commissioner Kearns, if I may add, so this plan only shows the deviations from sign codes, so those that exceed the design pattern book, so they may still have signage on that east side, they're just not requesting like additional than what code allows.
That's, yes.
Commissioner Quinones?
No additional comments from me, thanks.
Commissioner Holub?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
No questions.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple really quick ones. Thanks, both of you, for the presentation. Very informative, and this is just the deviation from the normal signage. My question was going to be, what about anything upstream and downstream, like 32nd and Clear Creek, or 40th underneath the highway, or down Youngsfield? But that's not asking for a deviation, so probably answered my own question.
Are you finished?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I answered my own question.
Commissioner Shelkey?
I don't have any questions.
All right. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve case number WZ 23-04, a request for approval of master sign plan on property zoned planned mixed-use development, PMUD, located at 13155 West 40th Avenue, for the following reasons. The site is eligible for a master sign plan. The master sign plan promotes well-planned and well-designed signage. The master sign plan is appropriate for a hospital campus, which is a unique land use with a unique signage and wayfinding needs. The master sign plan is consistent with the intent of the sign code and design pattern book, and is appropriate for the context of the development, with the following condition: the applicant will obtain building permits that comply with the master sign plan prior to installation of the approved signs.
May I have a second?
Second.
Please vote. Commissioner Moore is abstaining.
Motion approved, six to zero with one abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
I will now open the public hearing for case number Z0A-24-03. Commissioner Kearns, will you please read the request?
Sure. This is an ordinance amending Section 26-09 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning public hearing letter notice, case number Z0A-24-03. Prior to a public hearing for a quasi-judicial application, the zoning code requires that notice of the hearing be sent by letter to owners and occupants within 600 feet of the subject property. City Council recently discussed the requirements and practice associated with letter notice and directed staff to increase this radius to 1,000 feet. Notice for this public hearing was provided pursuant to the Code of Laws.
May I please have a staff report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. At this time, I would like to enter into the record the contents of the case file and the zoning ordinance. The matter before you this evening, I don't have a presentation, per se, but I think I'll be able to answer your questions. I do have one map if I need to pull it up for assistance. The matter before you this evening is consideration of an ordinance to expand the letter notice required for neighborhood meetings for most public hearings from 600 feet to 1,000 feet. The ordinance is a result of a council discussion following a rezone of the Bank of the West property at 44th and Wadsworth, and that was a very small site, and it was potentially to be integrated into the larger Ives Affordable Housing site, but at the time that it was rezoned, it was owned by the city, and so the notice went out from the property boundary of that small site. And so, there was some concern that the notice did not go far enough out and reach enough people. During a council session, there was discussion on other alternatives, however, the final direction was simply to expand the radius from 600 feet to 1,000 feet to capture more people within the notice area. So, this change will result in approximately twice the number of properties that are noticed, and as a result, twice the number of mailings that go out, and so it was also decided to split the cost of postage with the applicant, and so if this ordinance is approved, the fee schedule would be amended to reflect that change. Right now, the city pays 100% of the postage costs. Also of note, the notice for the Board of Adjustment, because they typically hear mostly variance cases and sometimes rarely, but a temporary use permit code interpretations, their noticing requirements would remain the same at 600 feet, because typically, those are very localized. are very localized land use cases. And so, the draft ordinance is attached in your packet. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council on this code amendment, and the motion language can be found on page three of the staff report. So, the city is the applicant, and I am here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioner Shelkey?
So, you mentioned that the cost of the mailings would be shared, right?
Correct.
And that's a new thing, right?
That's correct.
How much are we talking about, the cost-wise? Do you have any idea?
Well, it would be the postage on the number of mailings, and it varies, so if you have a site with a lot of large properties around it, it might be very, a very small amount. I forget what the going postage rate, because I buy those forever stamps, but if it's 60 cents, you know, and it's going out to 100 owners, then that $60 would be split. If it is going out to, you know, 800 owners, then you're going to have a higher cost, both to the city and to the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for taking this on. I was at that council meeting, and that was, that was a big concern for some of the citizens, so I think that's a really good idea, that extra 400 feet. Of course, the guy that's at 1,001 is going to not be happy, but the person that's at 800 feet will be ecstatic, so thank you very much for this.
Commissioner Hala?
No questions. I just wanted to say thank you for also providing the relevant distances for nearby cities. That is helpful.
Commissioner Quinones?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearns?
No questions.
Commissioner Moore?
No questions.
All right. I see nobody in chambers for public comment. Tammy, do we have anybody online?
Nobody on Zoom.
Does anybody have any further questions or comments before I entertain a motion? Mr. Kearns?
I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Section 26-109 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning public hearing letter notice, including a proposed ordinance and a staff memo from August 3, 2028, in city council study session.
May I have a second?
Second.
Commissioners, please vote.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is old business. Do we have any old business this evening?
No, Madam Chair, we do not.
All right.
And under new business, first of all, I'd just like to welcome our two new commissioners, Commissioner Hala and Commissioner Quinones. Trying really hard on that name. And I'll give you a moment to say welcome. Welcome.
Welcome.
Glad you're here. All right. Moving on to upcoming dates, all right, so our next planned meeting would be on April 4. There will not be a meeting on April 4, so you have the evening off, however, there will be a meeting on April 18. And that's a fairly important meeting, because we will do the election of officers on that night, and we also have one rezoning case. So, if you cannot attend, make sure you let our recording secretary, Tammy, know at least one week before the meeting, unless you're ill, in which case it would be excused. All right. And then, I also wanted to mention that on, well, I'm going to go through a couple of dates, and then we've got a couple of dates that are relevant to the commission itself. On the city plan, I wanted to give you a quick update. Of course, the evening of the steering committee meeting was our big blizzard, and so we ended up changing it to Zoom, and we had really good attendance. Only three people weren't unable to attend, so it was a very robust, entertaining discussion, and I think we just have an excellent steering committee that you all enjoy working with when you meet them at some point. We do have an update on the city plan going to city council on April 15, which of course is also tax day. And then, on April 16, the night after, there is the citywide public kickoff meeting at 4:30 at the REC Center. That is our open house for the city plan, so I hope you can join us. And then, the following night, there is a second steering committee meeting on April 17. So, they're kind of packed in. This is partly due to the travel arrangements, and also just because they kind of build off of each other. And this is where the next date ties into the Planning Commission. On May 2, the consultant team will be here to provide an update and get some feedback from you all, so I hope that you all can attend on May 2. May's going to be a busy month. We also have, on May 16, the city attorney is going to be joining us and doing a training. And so, I don't think that we've had one for a couple of years, and we've got a few new commissioners, and it's just a good reminder for all of us. If you cannot make it, of course, it will be recorded, and you can watch it later, but if you are able to attend in person and participate in the discussion, I think it'll be a good one. If you haven't met our city attorney, he's very good. I've worked with a lot of city attorneys over the year, and I would put him up there in the best, and he's also quite entertaining, so it won't be a dry session, and it'll, I'm sure, be entertaining and very informative, so hope you could join us. That concludes my updates.
All right. Any commissioner updates? Commissioner Shelkey?
Nope, I don't think so.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thanks, Madam Chair. A couple of quick notes for public and all of us. I read that we're going to have a branch drop-off from the mighty storm tomorrow and Saturday at Color Stand Elementary in the District 3, and so free drop-off, no commercial, there's all kinds of other rules with it, and the Easter egg hunt Saturday. Don't forget, that's a blast.
Where is it at?
Anderson Park. And it goes quick. Them little kids can suck up eggs fast.
Thank you.
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Hala?
No, nothing at this time, thanks.
Commissioner Quinones?
No.
Commissioner Kearns?
None for me, thanks.
I have an update. I am serving on the Jeffco Advocacy Network, which is concentrating on affordable housing. And on April 4, you can all go, Local Works is holding what's called a Housing Happy Hour, and they are going to have representatives from the city and from the Jeffco Advocacy Network explaining to people exactly what is affordable housing, because there's a lot of misconceptions about it. It's free, it's very casual, there's going to be two sessions. The first one starts at 5 o'clock. It's at Stylist and Crate, and then those meetings are scheduled to kind of go for like 30 minutes, there'll be a break, and then there'll be a second session after that one. I do believe they will be serving beverages. There might be a little alcohol involved, I'm not sure about that, but it would be good for us to attend, because 5 p.m. on April 4, because we have affordable housing come before us quite a bit, so I encourage you all to join us, and tell all your friends and family members and associates that may have questions about affordable housing. And with that, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Please note that I said I'd have us out of here at 7:15, and I beat that by five minutes. I hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
May I have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
Meeting adjourned.